Isn't obvious. Before we get started, Karen, could you please take roll call?
Yep, Mr. Clevenger.
Here.
Mr. Githens. Bill? Githens?
Well, I got unmuted here. I do what I'm told to do.
I was wondering why you're screaming into your phone and no one's hearing you. Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Ms. Richardi?
Here.
Mr. West?
Present.
All present.
Great. Thank you, Karen. We put out an agenda that we would be discussing some potential policies, procedures, and resolutions related to the pandemic. And the first one, I know that Jonathan has emailed the council members some documents. And so I wanted to start with that utility resolution document. And I think for the best interest of all the people who have joined our call, who have not seen this, it's probably ideal to read it aloud. So I'll try to do that slowly and make sure everyone can hear. And then the council members will open it up for discussion. This is Resolution 2020-004. It's a resolution temporarily amending our utilities' customer policies related to COVID-19. Whereas the Culver Town Council previously adopted Resolution 2014/005, adopting the Town of Culver Utility Service Policy and a corresponding water payment arrangement form. And whereas there is anticipated to be severe economic hardship for utilities' customers during the pandemic. And whereas the Culver Town Council wishes to be proactive in adjusting existing payment policies for utility customers suffering economic loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Culver Town Council adopts the following amendments to Resolution 2014/005. A resolution adopting the Town of Culver Utility Service Policy. Section 1, the amendments listed herein shall be temporary in nature. They will take effect upon passage and will apply to service charges due on the following dates: March 15, April 15, and May 15. The amendments may be extended by a vote of the Town Council prior to their expiration at the June 15 billing date. Section 2, as stated in Resolution 2020/002, no late penalties will be assessed to any utility accounts for fee due on March 15, April 15, or May 15. This can be extended for additional due dates by a vote of the Town Council prior to June 15. Section 3, Water Payment Agreement, see attached Exhibit A. Conducted by the Office of the Clerk-Treasurer, explicitly allow repayment terms of up to 36 months for the customer to repay fees accumulated during the February, March, and April 2020 service periods. Section 4, the Culver Town Council shall establish a small business utility debt relief program for debts accumulated by small businesses during the February, March, and April 2020 billing periods. For the purposes of this program, small businesses shall be defined as commercial entities open to the public as a business established on or before February 1, 2020, and continuing in business after May 2020 for a period of at least six months with 50 or fewer employees. This includes, but is not limited to, service stations, restaurants, retail, medical offices, salons, and other commercial utility customers as described above and located within the municipal boundaries of the Town of Culver. To be eligible for the Small Business Utility Debt Relief Program, qualifying businesses must submit a utility debt relief application, Exhibit B, to the Office of the Clerk-Treasurer no later than June 1, 2020. The maximum relief amount shall be capped at $1,500 per commercial customer, and the customer must provide demonstration of hardship due to COVID-19 as part of their application. Applications will be reviewed by the Town Council at the first council meeting in June. It must be approved by a vote of council for the debt to be forgiven. If this should pass on this date, it would be passed and adopted by the Town Council in the Town of Culver. Exhibit B, as mentioned, is a small utility debt relief application to COVID-19 debt relief for utilities. And that basically, that paperwork looks like it includes the business, their address, email address, the number of full-time employees they have, the number of full-time employees they have on two specific dates, explanation of the economic hardship related COVID, and the total utility fees for the due dates of March, April, and May 15. The requested debt relief amount is also indicated along with signature and date. Council members, any questions about this resolution?
Jenny, Bill Clevenger.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. We're going out, we're going to allow repayment over 36 months. That's an awful long time for a three-month bill on arrears.
I think that's our current, what's our current policy, Jonathan, for residents?
Actually, I'm going to let Karen take that one if she can. I mean, I think we don't have a set cutoff date. We're pretty flexible with people. It really depends on the total amount due. I think we've extended some business accounts more than 12 months, if I remember correctly, but I don't know that we've gone past 24. Does that sound right, Karen?
Yeah, we haven't really had a ton of them. It's usually people who are getting ready to be disconnected that come in and set up the payment plan, and usually it just goes on for maybe a couple months. But yeah, I mean, they could rack up some decent-sized bills too, and among all the other bills that they have to pay, you know, it might be a reasonable time, and they don't have to go that long.
Right. I think that was the thought, was that it would be a maximum, really, of 36 months. If the person feels comfortable with 12, or 18, or 24, you know, and it's a small amount, I mean, we would encourage them whatever they feel comfortable with, but.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I had one note, Jenny. The section, there was a change in Section 4 where it listed the types of businesses. Rather than get that specific, I recommended a change this afternoon, and it was that we would swap out those two sentences for, "This program is specifically designed to relieve utility debt for small business customers who face significant hardship due to COVID-19. Businesses able to operate under normal or near-normal conditions are not likely to be awarded debt relief through this program. All commercial utility customers as described above and located within the municipal boundaries are eligible to apply." So there was that section where you had talked about the different types of businesses, and I think later, sometime today, based on some feedback I had from a couple council members, I was leaning towards changing the language to what I just read, if everybody's okay with that.
Okay. We would be considering Jonathan's change, council members, if you agree to that. Bill, I think the idea that 36 months for a regular customer, not necessarily a business, was because we know some of these people have become unemployed as a result of COVID. So if they're unemployed for two or three months, they could potentially rack up some pretty big bills. So we wanted to kind of be ready for that.
Okay, fine.
Any other questions, council members, or discussion points?
I have a question. On Section 1 and Section 2, should you put the year on that? Anywhere where it says March 15, April 15?
Yeah.
May 15?
Yes.
Should probably say 2020, if that hadn't been corrected on the new version.
Yeah, as well as the June 15 date.
Yes.
Excellent proofreading skills, Sally.
Right.
Same thing with Exhibit B, Jonathan. There are a couple places, there's the total utility fees, March 15, April 15, May 15.
Yep.
Any other discussion points from council or questions?
This is Rich. I don't have any.
Go ahead.
Bill Githens, did you say anything?
Yes, I did. You know, we also should be aware that through the township, Marlene Moeller and the Township Trustee, you know, will pay up to, what is it, $600 in utility fees. So, you know, there are additional resources that the, that an individual can make themselves aware of. And I, like Bill Clevenger, think 36 months is a little too long. I could see 18 months. I mean, if we've never gone more than 24, obviously, we're going to encourage people to go less, but there's no use bringing people out for 36 months, because what if they decided to just walk on the, walk on the bill? So I'm for shortening the trigger.
To Bill's comment about Marlene, Julie is very, very good about when people come in and are struggling with their bills to provide resources, and she'll steer them towards Marlene, or the Salvation Army, or other spots. So she is putting that information out.
Okay.
Terrific. That's great. Bill, both of you, both Bills, 36 months seem long. Would 24 months work for you?
It would for me.
It would for me, if that's the maximum that we've done in the past. I don't think we should go out any further than what we've done before, and if that's what Karen says we've gone out to, I'm agreeable with 24 months.
Okay.
Could it be, could it be 24 and then possibly come back and revisit if we know that there's somebody really struggling? I mean, I think the town has been, you know, at least Julie and I really try to work with residents to get the bills paid. And so I think if somebody, you know, hit the 24 months and they were very diligent about paying and they were just still stuck, could we have some sort of, like, stopgap measure that maybe we could come back to council and ask to extend it? Or just, you know, give us a little bit of flexibility?
I believe so, Karen. I think that's a good point.
Yeah, Bill Githens, I don't have any problem with that. I think we do that anyway with people, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm, no, that's okay. If some, because your number isn't going to be that many, I wouldn't believe. And, yeah, we would always be willing to entertain something.
Okay.
Any other discussion points on the resolution? Is everybody okay with Section 4? Allowing some debt relief for our businesses that are not collecting revenue right now and/or that have significant impact, as long as they fill out the appropriate paperwork and apply?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
All right. I would honor a motion to pass Resolution Number 2020/004.
I will make that motion with the change to the date of 36 months to 24 months.
Okay, that's Mr. Githens with amending the 36 months to 24 months, motioning to approve on the resolution. Do I have a second?
Bill Clevenger seconds.
All in favor? Karen, please call for the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Richardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, motion carries. Great. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda, I wanted to cover the Business Aid Program, which is also a resolution. And if you guys can listen to my voice a little bit longer, I think it's appropriate that we read it. This would be Resolution Number 2020/005. A resolution creating a small business grant program related to industries negatively affected by COVID-19. Whereas the Town, Culver Town Council desires to create a small business grant program to assist local business during the COVID-19 public health crisis. And whereas there is anticipated to be severe economic hardship for particular business sectors during the pandemic. And whereas the Culver Town Council wishes to move quickly to enact a program designed to maintain existing small businesses with physical locations in Culver to protect the assessed value and economic vitality of the commercial districts in Culver. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Culver Town Council adopts the following program description, grant application, and funding parameters described herein to create a Town of Culver Small Business Grant Program. Section 1, the Town of Culver shall commit to an emergency small business grant program as outlined in Exhibit A and Small Business Grant Application, Exhibit B. Section 2, the purpose of this program is to provide emergency relief to small businesses with physical locations in the Town of Culver suffering significant economic loss due to public health measures in response to COVID-19, to ensure that those small businesses are able to reopen when the public health crisis has concluded. Initial grants will not exceed $7,500 per business, defined as all business entities combined. Section 3, total available funds for this program will be $150,000 from a variety of funds, including but not limited to funding swap agreements with the Culver Redevelopment Commission, loans and unused or unexpended funds from other available funding sources under the control of the Town Council, as allowed by the Indiana State Board of Accounts, and/or additional appropriations from the general fund balance. Final funding sources will be approved by the Grant Review Committee, consisting of the Council President, Redevelopment Commission President, Clerk-Treasurer, and Town Manager. That's the resolution itself. Exhibit A is outlining businesses that would be eligible for the Town of Culver Small Business Grant. I'm going to go ahead and read those. Must be in good standing with regard to the state and local taxes, licenses, and code compliance. Must be in good standing with the Indiana Secretary of State. Must have been established and operational in the Town of Culver since January 2020. Businesses that have expanded a storefront from another business are eligible. For example, an established caterer who opened a restaurant, or an online retailer who opened a boutique. Eligible uses of funds, payroll, and other operational costs, maximum award amount is $7,500. Preference will be given to businesses that have demonstrated a commitment to the community through the support of local youth or charitable programs, good corporate citizenship, participation in community and business support organizations, plans to hire, train, or assist individuals who lost jobs or experienced economic hardship during the COVID crisis can also be paid for. Needs that have not been or are not anticipated to be addressed through other government-assisted programs can also be paid for. Non, not received abaintments from the town previously, you cannot have that. Made all reasonable efforts to keep employees employed during the recovery process in an industry sector particularly affected negatively by COVID-19 and public safety measures associated with the outbreak. For example, retail, dine-in restaurants, salons, are not part of a franchise network, have a physical location in Culver. Those are the eligibility list. I'm also going to read what comes right after that. The Small Business Resilience Grant Program has limited funding. Therefore, not all grant requests may be approved or approved at the level requested. Applications will be reviewed by the Selection Committee, which will consist of Rich West, Jenny Monroe from Town Council, Karen Heim, Clerk-Treasurer, and Jonathan Leist, Town Manager. Financial data will be kept confidential, to the extent permitted under law. Industry sectors not significantly affected by the public health crisis related to COVID-19 are not meeting other requirements listed herein are unlikely to be funded through this grant program. Examples unlikely to receive funding include gas stations, grocery stores, professional healthcare offices, temporary online residential rentals such as vacation rental by owner, Airbnb, apartment buildings, construction businesses, and marinas. Please email completed grant applications supporting documents to the Town Manager at jleist@culver.org. Hard copies can be dropped off in the Utilities Dropbox at the Police Department. The review process, according to this, would work like this. Applications due in by Monday, April 13, at 9:00 a.m. Grant recipients would be notified. Payments will be issued by Monday, April 20, 2020. If funding allows, additional grants may be processed and awarded on an as-needed basis. Exhibit B is the Town of Culver Small Business Grant Application, where the businesses would fill out what is approximately 14 questions on a page and a half. They would also certify that the information they provide is truthful and accurate, and sign. I won't read all of that, because it pretty much reflects the eligibility that we just talked about. Are there, I'm sure there are questions or discussion points from council members?
This is Rich. A comment on this. As I think most of you know, for the last two weeks, on Friday, we've been holding an open forum on a teleconference with the local businesses. The, I think one of the major intents of this program is to try and fill a gap or void between what's happening at the federal or state level and what the immediate need of businesses is to do things like meet payroll, to pay their rent, not to get behind in their bills. And so that's one of the reasons why the amount is capped. Applying for either the idle loans, or the idle supplement loans, or the PPP loans will not necessarily negate somebody's eligibility for this. If they need longer-term assistance, those are probably the routes to go at this point in time.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions or comments from Bill Githens, Bill Clevenger, or Sally Richardi?
Um, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
No, you go. You go on.
Well, Bill and I were talking about this, and we think that the applications should be due the 1st of May. We don't think that, at least I don't, and I think Bill agrees, I don't think the people are going to be able to get stuff together by Monday, the April 13th.
I think, I'll speak for Jonathan and Rich on this. We've been sitting in the meetings with the businesses, and the reason we kind of were aggressive about coming up with those dates, Bill, was they are expressing a very strong urgency, because the federal loan packages that are coming out, a lot of the local banks that they've been trying are not ready to take those applications, or were kind of in line waiting on those, and they're taking much longer than the federal government said they would. So with that sense of urgency, we thought we would pressurize ourselves to get it done. We could certainly extend the deadline date while we're reviewing applications. You know, if we had one come in late that week that we're doing review, we could certainly accept it.
Bill, one of the other.
Get funds to businesses sooner, we thought we would make a pretty strong deadline.
This is Rich.
This is Bill Githens. I would like to address the two banks. One of the banks is not an SBA-approved bank, and that's First National, so they're not going to be involved in the programs. And in my talks over the last three, four days with Mike at First Farmers, they've been inundated, as all banks have, and they're having, you know, difficulty going through all the applications and the timeframes. And plus, SBA keeps changing the requirements. So there's going to be a delay there, because people, when this came down last Friday, thought they could walk in Monday and get money. Well, the government, as we know, just doesn't work that quick.
Yeah.
The SBA, once you submit a, years ago, when I was doing SBA loans, it was all done on paper. Now it's all done, you know, electronically, which speeds up the process, hopefully. But when a application is turned in, if it's not complete, it gets rejected and sent back to the applicant, and the applicant has to comply with the information needed. I can see that same thing happening here, and I definitely don't see it happening by next Monday, the 13th. To put back, put together all these figures and numbers that you, that we want, particularly if they have accountants doing their work for them. That's the main reason to extend the application date, and then extend the funding date to either Monday, the 11th of May, or May 15th, and Friday, May 15th, and we can always, you know, as soon as the funds are available, shorten it before, but have, you know, have an end date on them. So that's the reasoning for the two changes in the dates.
This is Rich. Can I comment on that, please?
Yes.
Go ahead, yeah. I didn't want to talk over anybody. First, Bill, one of the things that we've been doing in calls and pushing out on the Facebook post is the list of financial requirements and documents that are needed for the SBA loans, and we've been encouraging people for the last two weeks to gather those documents. The second is, if you look at the application, ours is pretty simplified. I would not have a problem if we extended the deadline for the application, but if we were permitted to process applications and payments as we receive them, I would have no problem if we extend the deadline, but are permitted to process them as we receive them, because I think a number of people are in, I mean, they've, they have some cash flow issues that, that another 30 days may not be as helpful as it could be, so.
Yeah.
This is Bill Githens. I don't have a problem with that, Rich. That makes sense to me, that, you know, as soon as the applications are in and they're reviewed and deemed complete, you know, going ahead and funding, rather than waiting, you know, another two weeks to get funding. That, I can see that as not a problem.
Clevenger concurs.
Sally, any comments?
My, my main comment was that, you know, if you have approximately a week turnaround on issuing the money after you approved the loan or the grant, then, yeah, I don't have a problem with extending it, but I do think it'd be a good idea to get those who get it in on, by the 13th. If you could get a turnaround by the 20th, I'm sure that those that are in dire straits for making payroll, et cetera, that that would be beneficial to them.
Yeah. Okay. I do know we have a handful of business owners probably on this call. So certainly, if, I know, Jonathan, can you tell who's got their, do any of the business owners have their hands up? Or Danielle, who's with the Discover Culver, who's been working closely with some of the business owners lately? Any comments from them?
Jenny? But we might want to open it up, yeah.
Before you do, I, Bill Clevenger, I have another, I have another question or suggestion. Any loan should have a requirement that has to have a personal guarantee.
Well, this is technically not a loan for this program. If we did, we're going to talk about a bond in the next discussion, but this is technically considered a grant.
Well, we have on the, it says if, number 13, if the town creates a loan program, would you apply for that in addition to this grant?
Yeah, that's just a question on the application right now.
Yeah, well, but I'm.
Good point.
It has, there, in my opinion, there absolutely has to be a personal guarantee, if you're going to loan money.
I agree on a personal guarantee on a loan. If it's a grant situation, you know, grants come and go, so when the grant is up, and if the grant's only for $7,500, or up to $7,500, you know, my question is, you're allotting $150,000. my question is, you're allotting $150,000 for $7,500 grants? I mean, are there going to be 20 plus businesses that are going to apply with $7,500? That's just a question I have. I mean, do, does the dollar amount need to be that high? Could it, could it suffice with $100,000 or, you know, could we say the program will be up to a certain dollar amount?
That's, that's where we came up with the 150 bill. We figure there probably would be more than 10. And certainly we don't have to use it all if we don't get the applicants. But, you know, just based on the conversation we've, we've been having with business owners, would we like to even have a bigger pool and bigger grants? Yes, but we were also trying to be realistic about that number.
This is Rich.
Number three, then I would say the program will be up to 150,000, not just a flat 150.
Yeah, right now, that's how it's written. We, we would only be allocating 150 into this grant pool. This does not mean we're doing any kind of loan. That question on that application, we're asking the businesses, are you planning on applying for those as part of their application?
I understand, and that's why I'm saying clarification on section three, total available funds for this program will be up to 150,000.
Okay.
Like you said, if, if you only get, you know, $80,000 worth of applications, you know.
Yeah, you don't have.
How, how long are you going to leave this open? Is this going to be only open ad infinitum or? Because grants, you know, have a start date and a begin date. And, you know, is your end date on this grant? You know, let's say June 30th, I'm just picking an arbitrary date. That's how grants are done. And I think you've seen enough grants too, Jenny, that you know they have a start and an end date. And there's no guarantee that a grant's going to go forward the next time around if, if there's no need for it.
Well, what is said, we will, we will receive applications through April 30th, but we will start making decisions on these by April 20th. So if there's anything left after April 20th, we still consider new applications coming in, but we end the cycle at April 30th.
I think, Jenny, this is Rich. Jenny, this is Rich. I think earlier we agreed that, that application, the deadline for applications could be as late as May 15th. And, I mean, I'm fine with the suggestion that Bill has that, I mean, we only, we only, at this point, we fund, we make sure funds are in there that will be sufficient up to the $150,000 to fund the grants that are applied for by May 15th. And then at that point, we could look at whether we want to extend it, modify it or, or look at a loan program.
Okay.
I would be, I would be.
I'm sorry. And what you said, you know, fund the loans as they come in, not, you know, as they're approved and, I mean, fund the grants as they come in and are approved, you know, not waiting, you know, another two weeks or so to, to fund, fund the grant. I mean, if you get five grants on April 15th and you've approved them, you know, by the 17th, then you can fund them on the 18th or 19th. I mean, that, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with that, so.
Okay. So let me summarize for Jonathan's sake in terms of modifying the resolution that in section three, we make that language clear that it's up to $150,000 for this program. And that the other thing is we will receive applications through May 15th, but we will be processing applications as they come in. So it's really a first come, first served kind of situation. We won't start reviewing any applications, however, until April 13th at the earliest. Does that make, does that work for you guys?
Does for me, Clevinger.
Yeah. Githens is fine with that.
Sally's good with that.
Yeah, this is Rich. I'm good with that. If, if we have applications sooner, I mean, and the group can get together to review them, that's fine. But yes, I'm fine with that.
I also want to make sure I ask Jim Clevinger and Karen Heim if you have any input or comments?
This is Karen, I have none.
Okay. And Jim Clevinger, are you still with us? Do you have any comments? I think you're on mute, Jim.
He's, he's not on mute, but this is Jonathan. He texted me and said he was having some issues, so I don't know. I think he could hear us fine. For some reason, he's not being able to get through to us.
Okay. Well, I know he, he helped us come up with this plan, so I'm assuming he's okay with it.
Yeah, Jim, if you, if you're still on and listening, if you want to call my cell phone and address over speaker, I can put you on.
Yeah, we'll give him a minute for that, Jonathan.
Jimmy, it's Bill Githens, I have a question for you.
Sure.
In some of our past discussions, you mentioned that you would like Bill and I to, you know, Clevinger and I to review items. Is that pertaining only to the loan?
Yeah, we're getting, we'll get to that in the next topic for sure.
Okay, just a question, thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, Jonathan, I'm assuming we're okay to move on?
We're going to put Jim on real quick. Jim, I'm going to put.
Great, thank you. Sure.
Okay, can you guys hear Jim?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I can see you guys and it shows that I'm not viewed and heard everything that was going on. I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm happy that you're going through this process. I think you may need to do a similar one on the utilities. The resolution that was approved earlier.
Just as far as talking about a, a review committee and setting those standards for how those are reviewed, is that what you're talking about, Jim?
Yes, that, yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, I, I think this is great.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, with the changes that we summarized, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020/005.
Bill Githens, so moved.
Clevinger, second.
All in favor, Karen will call the roll call.
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Rcharti?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Great, thank you, Karen. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda, I wanted to, we have had some discussions one-on-one and also with the businesses about considering the potential for doing a bond whereby we would do loans that are not grants, but a loan for businesses. We know there's some expense associated with doing a bond. We've also discussed the idea of perhaps the Culver Redevelopment Commission partnering with the town to do some sort of bond if we need to offer our, our small businesses a loan. And so we haven't made a lot of progress on that. Karen's been looking into some things on this as well as Jonathan. And what I was hoping is that Bill Githens and Bill Clevinger, with some financial background in their careers, would work with Jonathan and Karen to do some more research on this to see if it would be feasible. And then to communicate well with Rich West and the CRC to keep them in the loop. And consider this as more of a long-term solution for our businesses that may qualify for some of the federal aid, some of them may not. We just don't know what that looks like until some of the businesses are applying. We also know it takes a long time to get a bond set up. So we thought we should be proactive and start looking into that now. So I just really wanted to get some feedback from council to see what your thoughts were on this, if it's something you think we should pursue and then have set up a, a task force to start pursuing it.
This is Bill Githens. I agree that we should probably look into it. And I think the vehicle should be through the CRC. And I think Rich with the CRC and their relationship with Barnes and Thornburg, who is definitely, you know, at the forefront with TIF districts and working with them and try, we should go through them and take their advice as to how to set a program up like this. So I think that we do need to have an attorney involved on the front end. I think once our initial program on the grant cycle is done, you know, sometime after May 15th, at that point in time, we should know, hopefully, and maybe even before then, how many of these businesses are going to, you know, look at doing, wanting a loan? And also as to how much they're, they're considering a loan should be for so that we could, you know, add all the numbers together and have a better idea as to the total amount to look at. Mike, Mike Coleman.
This is Rich. If I can come out or provide a little bit more information. Jonathan and I had a discussion with Phil Fasenda, the attorney that CRC uses from Barnes and Thornburg, about what his suggestions were on things that we could do. His suggestion basically was that the town could do an economic development bond that would be supported by TIF funding. There, he, he brought out a lot of advantages and, and to it. But I think as Jenny said, and I think it's all of us feel, that the bond is a huge commitment and it's not just something we should sort of, you know, just jump into. We did bring it up at CRC, but just as a point of information when we had our special meeting last Thursday. And so my suggestion is to support what Jenny had said, which is that Bill Clevinger and Bill Githens, especially with your banking backgrounds and, and with Jonathan and I can share more information about what we heard from Phil. Karen had also gotten some information, I think, from Baker Tilly. But to explore that as an option and to sort of dig into that pretty, much more deeply because it's a bigger commitment financially. It's a, it's a huge cost to, on the startup of it. And so anyway, that's, that's my two cents. And that's what CRC knows at this point also.
Thank you, Rich.
Yes, Bill Githens again. Thanks, Rich. That, to expand upon all you've said, I, I totally agree. And, you know, would look towards, you know, what y'all have done so far is in going forward and with the attorneys, the thing we want to do is get it, if we're going to even do it, get it done and structured right. So I totally agree with your comments, Rich.
Clevinger concurs with everything.
Thank you, Bill. Sally, any comments on the bond?
I agree with, you know, with Rich and, and, well, and Bill and Bill. The one thing I think we'll have a better feel in another, you know, another 30 days, exactly where we stand and now whether we need to go the route with a, a bond. They, they are expensive to set up on the front end.
Yeah. Even with interest rates really low, they're pretty, pretty pricey on the front end.
But if, if we need to go that way, then I think that it's something we need to look at.
Definitely. Okay. Well, since we have willing council members and clerk in town manager who will do some research on that for us, that would be great. And I know Karen is very well connected to a lot of the state agencies, including the State Board of Accounts. And she's learning more and more about what other agencies are doing and what maybe other communities are doing. We may see something come out in another community that would also work that we haven't thought about. So it's, I'm glad to know the council is open and, and willing to research this and look, take a serious look because I think our businesses are going to need more than one option, given that we're in a rural community and we're coming out of our slow season and many of our businesses aren't going to see the revenue they're accustomed to in May with all the cancellations. So I really appreciate everyone's attitude about that.
Jenny?
Yeah.
Do you want a motion to set up some type of committee to do, to review this or?
That would be great, Rich.
Okay. Well, I would move that, that you appoint on behalf of the council a committee to explore a economic development bond and appoint two of the council members to that, Bill Githens and Bill Clevinger, to work with Karen and Jonathan on researching it and coming back to the council and CRC with suggestions or the results of their research.
I would second that motion.
Great. Can we take a roll call, Karen?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm finishing up typing. Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Rcharti?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Great, thank you, Karen. Next, I wanted to allow Jonathan a few moments to do a town manager report since we're here meeting. And just remind everyone that we'll be having our regular meeting next week on our regularly scheduled date. But Jonathan, did you have anything to update the council with?
Yeah, I had a few things. First, Jim, just, our attorney, Jim Clevinger, wanted to weigh in and just reiterate that, yes, it is a, a big upfront cost to issue a bond. Attorney fees plus financial advisor, it would be expensive to get set up. He would recommend it only if we have enough interest from the businesses to make it worthwhile, was his comment. So for my town manager report, a couple of things. First, financial ones. I like to ask the council for permission for Karen to issue two checks. We haven't received the invoice yet, but I'd like her to do it before we meet again, if I get those in this week. One is for blessings in a backpack for $1,000 and the other is Culver Community Food Bank for $1,500. And that's for purchase and distribution of, of food to residents in need in the Culver area. I, I think I sent out some emails on this and tried to bring you guys up to speed. And if you have any questions about it, I'd address those now.
Any questions, council?
This is Bill Githens. I think I replied back and my recommendation was just split it down the middle, 1250 and 1250, because a lot of people in both categories are going to go to the other one to, to, you know, people are going to use the food bank and also use blessings in a backpack. So I was just going to split it 50/50. That was my recommendation.
Any other questions or comments from council?
That's fine, yeah.
Mr. Githens, is that a motion?
That's a motion. I make a motion that we split it evenly, 1,500 to both the food bank, I mean, 1250 to the food bank and 1250 to blessings in a backpack.
This is Rich, I second that motion.
All in favor, roll call?
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Rcharti?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you, Karen.
Next item. Okay, yep, I have two things. I believe one of them is on the claims for tonight for Jenny to approve. It's our seller's contract for maintenance of landscaping areas around the downtown and the entry signs through town. I don't have the exact amount. I think it's real close to what it was last year, which was around $3,500. So that's one of the claims on the list for tonight. Just for your information, we can do the actual contract approval later, but just wanted you to know, that's one of the items on the list. And I don't think the claim's there, but just wanted to give you a heads up that there was an accident in the EMS department. Vehicle hit a garage door that wasn't fully open. And so we had a repair for that from DC Garage over the, I think it was last weekend. So I, I don't think that one's on the list for tonight. So I don't think that one's on the list for tonight, but the seller's contract is.
Yeah, Jonathan.
Yeah.
The seller's contract is for $3,512.81, and the garage door repair was about $1,455, if I remember correctly. Yep.
Well, that's some teamwork right there.
Then the other items, let's see here. Just thank you to the news media for covering that release we did on the fundraiser for Blessings in Culver Community. We had a good response at Town Hall with people asking, you know, how they could make those donations. And then the other's just about kind of COVID-19 safety updates. And I know Wayne's on here if he wants to jump in when I'm done. But I'd just say that we are following all the recommendations from the state, whether it's coming from the governor, coming from the federal level of the CDC or the Marshall County Health Department. We are trying to keep up on all those things. There's a lot of information coming out, you know, every day, it still feels like. But we want people to be as safe as possible. We had previously announced that we were asking anyone coming to Culver, who either had been on vacation during spring break or coming back here from Chicago or Indianapolis or other locations around the country that might be considered hotspots for the virus, asking them to please self-isolate for 14 days voluntarily when they get here. You know, minimize their contact with everyone, I guess, until those 14 days are up, just to protect everybody. And so we put that out on Facebook in Town Gun and Lake and originally had said through April 13th. But I think we'll talk about extending that, I would assume, at least through the end of April. And then just, again, you know, we've closed the park playground equipment as that was ordered by the state. And we're just really trying to follow their lead on those things and be as proactive as we can in getting that word out to people and asking them to cooperate with the recommendations that are coming out from the Health Department, the CDC, and the governor.
Yeah.
This is Rich. Do you want a motion to approve the seller's contract and the claim for the garage door repair?
Yeah, that would be fine. I think, go ahead.
Really a motion to approve claims over 1,500. Wasn't there another one too?
There are a couple of claims, but you need a motion to approve the contract.
What, Tony Seller? Or Seller Services?
Okay. I would move that we approve the contract for Seller Services for the landscaping for $3,512.
Bill Giffens, I'll second.
All in favor, roll call?
Just a second.
No problem.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you, Karen. Do we also have a motion to approve the expenditure of fixing the garage door?
You don't need that.
Okay, sorry, we don't need it, Bill. Karen will take care of it in the claims. Anything else, Jonathan, to report on?
I'd just add again, with the golf carts have been a concern. We are still issuing permits as of right now, but we're only doing it by mail or email. So people can send their information in and we are allowing them to register for this year. But, you know, we're really keeping an eye on those things, those recommendations that have come out from the governor and CDC as far as how many people can be gathered in a location, how far apart they need to be and those kind of things. And, you know, we'll continue to monitor those things and ask people to follow the recommendations that we're sharing and the state and county level are putting out.
Great. I think if our police officers are seeing something they don't approve of in that regard, we should definitely work with wherever that's happening. I hate to punish people and, you know, everybody by not having golf carts, because it's a great way to get fresh air in a time when we're all feeling very cooped up. But we definitely need to monitor for it, where it's happening and where people are reporting it. It's creating a lot of anxiety for people to see, you know, a congregation of them. So if we do, we need to talk to whichever business is affected or the people doing it. And if we just can't get it under control, then we can take a different action.
Ginny, would you, I'm sorry.
Sure. Go ahead.
Would you consider using your authority regarding golf carts, that we could limit the occupancy to two people?
I don't know if we can. Can we?
I don't know. That's just my question.
Wayne, are you still here?
Yes, I'm still here.
Do you know if we can limit occupancy on a vehicle that's approved for street usage?
Well, being under a city ordinance, the town can pretty much do what they want. They can amend that ordinance. I think that's something maybe to run by Jim Clevenger to, I mean, what it would entail to, if we would have to amend that, or we, I mean, we could consider it emergency. I mean, I really think it's something we need to monitor, because as the weather gets better, it's going to bring more people out. A lot of people, as we know already, are in our social distancing. And we're getting more and more influx into the community, either from in town or around the lake. And as you know, we've had almost 500 golf carts registered last year. So it's gonna bring a lot more people out. And this is a courtesy the town offers for people to use those, so we can take them off the street just as easy.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Well, let's take a strong stance on monitoring. And Mr. Clevenger, if we see that, knowing that we could write that into our current ordinance, I would definitely consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about Jonathan's report?
Bill Giffens, talking about the beach lodge, is there any determination about the ribbon cutting?
I don't believe so for now. I think we had the date set in May. So I think we probably wait another week or two, but it's likely we'd have to move that out.
Okay, thank you.
Honestly, I think if we're gonna be good stewards of the message of social distancing, we don't want to organize that until the governor has lifted the stay-at-home order.
Correct.
But definitely keep our eye on that date as we get closer. I'll move on to the clerk's report and claims.
There are three claims over $1,500 for your approval. One is for Baker Tilly, and that's for the storm water rate study, $1,941.25. And then the Seller Services contract for $3,512.81. And then Thomas Excavating for Cavalier Park, $63,217.51.
Motion to approve the claims?
Clevenger moves.
Sally seconds.
Roll call?
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
I had one other question. I intended to send out a clerk's report over the weekend and it didn't get done with juggling, working from home, working in the office. People have been asking about the sidewalk program. We initially pushed back the application date from April 1st to April 15th. And seeing as how there's still a stay-at-home order as of the 15th, is it something that you want to push back? I know there was talk of using the sidewalk money as part of the grant program. Or do we come up with a different way of awarding the grants that doesn't involve people coming into the, physically coming into the office? You know, we could make the applications available online and just have people email them in beginning, you know, say, we'll take it at X date, beginning at 8 o'clock AM. And then it's just whoever, whichever applications we receive first.
I would love your opinion on that, Karen. Do you think we should suspend the program and use those funds in the grant program? Or do you think that we should go ahead and continue? I know we only budgeted $12,500 for it this year.
Yeah, it's a fairly low amount. I've had some interest from people wanting to do their sidewalks. And I don't necessarily want to stop that process. And I think we could sustain having some flexibility on where we're going to pull funds for that grant program. I think we could, we could still allow for the sidewalk program to continue.
Sure. It would also provide revenue for those businesses that do paving. And you're right, it could benefit the businesses as well as the residents.
Right.
Does anyone have a problem with Karen just moving that date out as, you know, until we know we're not at a stay-at-home order any longer? Let authorize her to do that until the time comes that we can put those applications out?
Or would you be willing to change that process slightly for this year at least? And allow people to email in the application?
I'm fine with emailing in the application.
Go ahead, Rich.
I'm sorry, Bill. This is Rich. I'm fine with their emailing in the application. And I think, I'm not sure why we wouldn't make that a permanent change.
It's Bill Giffens, whatever. It's Bill Giffens. In my opinion, whatever Karen wants to do is fine.
Thank you, Phil.
Are you looking for a second on that motion?
Yeah, I got a laugh out of you, Ginny.
So I'd like for a motion to approve Karen allowing, approve changing the process to allow applications to be emailed in and Karen, the clerk's office, to work with those residents as far as timing and so forth. Does that sound okay?
Bill Giffens, so move.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I would like to second that if we could have that just for this year.
For 2020. Okay. Bill Giffens, is that okay for Sally to amend your motion?
I agree. Bill Giffens agrees.
Okay, so Karen, I have a first and a second.
Yep.
Roll call?
I'd be really happy when these roll call votes are over. Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Anything else on the clerk's report?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Karen. This time I want to open it up for citizen input.
Ginny?
Yes?
Sorry, this is Jonathan. I think Wayne had something he wanted to report on too about the park possibly. If we could let him.
Let's do that before we do citizen input then. Wayne?
Okay, I'm here. Something I want the council to consider and keep in the back of their mind. I mean, the governor put out a recent order that he has closed all the state parks. If I read it correctly. And I know at our park, we have a beach and kind of a lot of golf cart thing. As the weather gets better, people are going to congregate in there. I mean, there's been a couple of nice days. We've had 20 vehicles in there. So, I mean, people are not great at always social distancing. And we get more and more emails and stuff where we see people or encouraging people to come out, do stuff. I just try to think, council needs to keep it on the back burner of that possibility if we have to close the park because of people generally not following the stay-at-home rules or stuff of that nature.
Okay.
Can I jump in, Ginny?
Yes.
Thanks, Wayne. We did, I think Amber's looking at some options. Especially, we had discussed kind of how to handle the piers and just trying to keep an eye on those things. And I asked her to look into, yeah, what our surrounding areas are doing as well. And I think a couple of council members and myself and her will get online. And I can get with you, Wayne, if you want to jump into that discussion too, just to kind of see what's going on around us and maybe make another date, kind of follow up and just make sure we keep up on things. Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good. I mean, I've been hit up with a couple of missed regarding the piers. When they got people bugging them about putting stuff out, so.
Yep. I'll send you an invite.
All right.
This is Bill Giffens. I, you know, I agree with Wayne. He brought up some good points. So I think it should be considered.
Bill Clevenger concurs. I also, I would be in favor during this time of just closing the park.
I think if we could somehow close off the beach area. And of course, the playground equipment is, the governor did that at least a week ago.
Yep.
I think walking the path is probably not a bad thing for people to be able to get exercise if they're keeping social distance. But if people are gonna congregate at a picnic table, we're definitely gonna have to do something differently.
Why can't we, why can't we just put the tape around the picnic tables just like we did the playground equipment?
Yeah. I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think, I think just this past few days, that the order Wayne's talking about had expanded. So when we saw the one from a week ago, closing the playgrounds, we put those up. And then I think the state just closed like their pavilions and things like that too.
Yeah.
And like you said, Ginny, they have their trails open, which is something I think we should still be doing for now, but.
Yeah, we could just put out an announcement that all park amenities are closed with the exception of the trails.
Yeah, I can give you an example. I talked to a DNR officer up at, one of the state parks up in Lakeview County. And they told me their park is packed. I mean, I mean, it's just, it's just food for thought is what I'm saying for you.
Well taken.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll get some sort of message out to the public on that too, guys. I was thinking we'd put a message out in a memo format about that, more about reminding people not to congregate. And also some of the resources that several of us have been sitting in meetings across the county. There are some resources for getting food, rent relief, that sort of thing, that I thought we would put together some sort of memo, put it on the Facebook page and on TGL and make sure we're communicating to people that there are some other resources out there we haven't communicated yet. And we'll mention the park in that memo. We'll just, I think we just have to communicate two, three times a week and just as regularly as possible.
Yep.
Yep.
Agree.
Anything else for the town manager or clerk at this time, or Wayne?
No.
I do want to open it to citizen input. I know it's kind of hard to do that. Is there anyone who's connected on computer that would like to wave their hand or unmute themselves? Okay.
Actually, Ginny, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Tracy. I'm sorry, I don't know if Danielle's still on or not. I just want to say thank you to the town council for taking the leadership in really, well, a number, a host of the motions that you made tonight, but in particular, the assistance to the businesses. For those of you who have been on the Friday. For those of you who have been on the Friday calls and are connected to the business community via the Facebook page, et cetera, there's a real urgent need out there. And I think that the efforts that you're undertaking with the grant program and hopefully with the loan program are going to be much needed. And I will say that the, that the need is like urgent and now. So I really appreciate that your application process for the grant is, is quick but also responsive to those who might not have the information available. I will say that a lot of them have been pulling together a lot of information for the federal loan program. So I'm hopeful that they'll be able to also be able to submit an application to you all pretty quickly. But thank you all for your support. It's much needed. And there's a huge, huge amount of distress out there. So thanks.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. Anybody else want to do citizen input?
This is Anita Gooden from WKBI 98.3 FM. With the loan and the program that you're doing for the businesses, would that be considered reimbursable, being that you're declared a public health emergency disaster? Would that be reimbursable with federal funds?
Not to my knowledge, Anita. We can certainly look into that. I know if you have like employee wages and that sort of thing, you can. We can't hear you right now that you're on mute.
I think the video is just behind.
Oh, yeah. Anita, you were. One minute, Anita, can you hear us?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you went on mute for a minute.
I did.
Did we answer your question okay?
Yes.
Okay. Was there another person that came on?
Yes, I have a question about the philanthropic organizations that you mentioned, the backpack program and the community program. Where can we donate as, to those two programs?
Tracy, can you give Heather the information?
Absolutely, thank you, Heather. So for Blessings in a Backpack, you can contact me directly. Now, don't worry, your check won't come to me. It's going to go right down to Kentucky, who is our managing organization for Blessings in a Backpack. Or you can also just look up online Blessings in a Backpack and you'll see their site to donate. The main thing to remember is when you donate, there should be a drop-down box or a way to designate Culver schools in there. You can do it that way. And for the pantry, you can simply write a check to Culver Food Pantry and drop it off at the pantry. Or again, if you contact me, I can give you Dennis Lewanowski's information to get it to him. But thank you, they need that support as well as the support that the council provided tonight.
Sure. I was thinking about posting it in our Facebook page for Culver.
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't, and you can probably contact Jonathan for the press release or I'm happy to also give you the links, but it's.
That would be, that would be great, and then I can post it.
Okay, so hopefully you two can connect. Any other citizen input?
This is a citizen, Dave Janney here. Just one comment on the, on the golf carts. We're a family of four that's sequestered together right now. And one of the joys that we do have is getting out on that when it's nice weather and riding around together. And we're all together anyway. So I don't know that that restriction of just number of people makes as much sense as separating people that are not together. You know, and maybe it's a limitation of a distance that golf carts need to be 10 feet away from each other or, you know, what have you. But I just put my two cents in about that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else for citizen input?
Jenny, this is Elizabeth. I, I agree with that. Vivian, Victor and I, we are always three together. So the idea of where would I have to leave one of my kids to go out? I agree, like you can't separate families. I have noticed as I've been in town, which has been very little since the stores sadly have been closed, that people are congregating, and I think that is the bigger problem.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Any other citizen input?
This is Dawn Brockie here. Can you hear phone input?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. I want to say, as Tracy said, you all are amazing. What you're trying to do for our community is just above and beyond. I think what any, anyone else I've talked to has been trying to do. And I'm just grateful. I think we're all resilient. And we are, I think you will find in good faith that your businesses and your members here in Culver are going to do everything they can to give back as soon as they are able with any sort of assistance that they do receive. So I just can't say enough how grateful I am just for the conversation and for the input that you all have had. So thank you all for leading us.
Thank you, Dawn. Any other citizen input? Okay, I'll move to council issues, starting with Sally, Richardy. Any council issues?
I have no issues.
Thank you, Sally. Bill Githens, any council issues?
No issue, but I have some announce, well, public service announcement. We had a library board meeting earlier this evening. And as you all know, I'm president of the library board. And we have agreed to go on with Governor Holcomb's program through the 20th of the month, particularly in dealing with employees and doing their furloughs for the part-time employees. And I also understand Karen Bowen reported tonight that the academy has entered into furlough agreements also. On, that's all I have on that. Our next monthly library board meeting will be Tuesday, April 21st. And we do that online. And we did it tonight and it worked out very well. That's all I have there. The only other thing I have on council issues is, involves the paddocks. And I understand that, and I've seen it, that the paddocks has a billboard sign up there evidencing the project, but it covers the sidewalk. And I don't see why they can't move that sign off the sidewalk, you know, five or six feet so that people can walk along and use the sidewalk. Because otherwise, you got to walk all the way around. That's all I have.
Okay, well, we'll ask Bob and Jonathan to look into that, Bill. Thank you. Mr. Clevenger, any council issues?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. West, any council issues?
First, before council issues, just a couple of brief announcements concerning the redevelopment commission. We had a special meeting last Thursday. The commission agreed to a partnership with Develop Culver and has authorized support for developing websites with online purchasing that the CRC will support for local businesses in Culver. Also supporting what we're calling the COVID-19 navigation assistance. And so the CRC has designated some funding for both of those projects. The, in terms of council issue, I just want to thank and express my appreciation personally to our first responders. I know Wayne and Chad have been working tirelessly. I know the EMS has been out on a number of calls. I've heard the fire department out several times. And I just really appreciate those people putting themselves on the front lines for us.
Excellent point, Rich. Thanks so much for saying that.
Thank you, Rich.
I just want to express my own thanks to the council, to Karen and Jonathan as well for putting so much work into just getting ready for this particular meeting. It's really difficult to do when we're all on phones and one-on-one and can't have, you know, an easy time of getting together our information. Our businesses have been supporting this community for decades. As someone who sat on the board for the Boys and Girls Club for 15 years now, I was just thinking that just at the auction alone, the kind of money that those businesses have helped us rid. And keeping our businesses open and solvent, we've just got to do that. Also, really proud that the council is concerned enough to fund our food bank and our Blessings in a Backpack. These efforts are, these are things we never thought we would have to do. I really appreciate how open you've been to it. I know our businesses will appreciate it because anything we can do to keep them solvent is good for Culver. So I just really appreciate all of you very much. I can't thank you enough for taking phone calls with us on off-meeting times. I'm so proud of Bob Porter and Wayne Bean and our EMS director, Deanna. Our fire department, all of everybody who's just putting in a tremendous effort to get through some really unusual times. Hope that the community will continue to be safe and follow the guidelines that. Meeting a little bit. But anyway, I just wanted to end on a positive note. So appreciate everybody and what they're doing in this community. If anyone doesn't have anything else, we can adjourn to, well, not really adjourn to claims tonight, but we can adjourn with a motion to adjourn.
So.
Yeah, there are claims. So I guess we are adjourning to claims. And Rich, I think you moved for the motion, correct?
I know I did.
Okay, Sally, motion to adjourn to claims. Do I have a second?
Clevenger. Oh, okay.
Thank you, Bill. Roll call?
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens? Was that an aye?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Chardee?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, Tracy.
Good night, Mrs. Calabash, wherever you are.
Jonathan, you want to stay on and try that?